The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. Hello and welcome. My name is Kamarr Williams and I am the Vice Chair. And I'll be presiding over this meeting in the Chair's absence. As we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for remote participation. For public participation, public comment will be solicited on each actual agenda item. Once I ask for a public comment on an item, please click Raise Hand in GoToWebinar in order to make a public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Do not use the Chat or Question function in GoToWebinar as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. Please limit background noise to the extent possible. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at www.roh palm beach dot com backslash YouTube. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting, this meeting to order, and this is a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Tuesday, August 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM. I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alicia, please do the recall for us.
Alright, starting off with Chairwoman Lauren McClellan. Vice Chairman Kamarr Williams.
Present.
Commissioner David Leland.
Here.
Commissioner Kara Derry.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Miller.
Here.
Andrew Alba, Alternate 1.
Present.
And Jonathan Dickinson, Alternate 2. The floor is yours.
Alright, thank you. We move to our next item, which is approval of minutes for the July 23rd, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
A motion to approve by Commissioner, Commissioner Miller, sorry. Do I have a second? Alright, second by Commissioner Leland. So do we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carries five to zero. Alright, next item up for discussion, application number 24-033AAR. Salon-centric signage. The applicant Kemp Signs and Services, Inc., on behalf of 511SR7 owner LLC, is requesting an architectural approval to install new wall signage and tenant replacement on the existing monument sign for a property located at 243 North State Road 7, Suite 101. Do we have a representative from Kemp Signs present? No?
Mr. Chair, do we know if they were gonna be online? Alicia, do you know? Is anybody online?
We have no one currently online and we had no current, like, previous knowledge.
No communication, okay. So, Mr. Chair, you can proceed with this item. It is an AAR item. If you want to jump over it and see if they show up, you can certainly do that, but if you'd wish to proceed, you can as well. It's your decision.
Alright, we can proceed. I pass it over to you, Middy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with that, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so in the absence of the applicant, in the event they walk in during this presentation, I will swear them in, but if I could swear in staff, this may be her actually right now. You're up, ma'am, just in time. That's okay. Can you go to the podium over there for me, please? Thank you. And I was just about to swear anybody in, so can you give the commission your name, please?
My name is Maria Morales and I'm here on behalf of Kemp Signs.
Great, thank you. Can you raise your right hand and Josu, you as well? Do you both swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Alright, pass it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Josu Ledger, Planning and Zoning Department, for the record. Application number 24-033AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install a new wall sign and tenant panel replacement for the existing monument sign, properties located at 543 North State Road 7, Suite 101. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed wall sign. So the top left of your screen is the existing wall. The bottom left is the proposed wall sign. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed monument sign. Top left, the slot that's empty, if you look into the bottom left, you'll see where it says Salon-centric, and that's what they're proposing. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-033AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Josu. Ms. Morales, do you have a presentation for us?
Um, I don't have a presentation, but I do have...
Ms. Morales, can you speak closer to the mic?
So I don't have a presentation, but I did notice that in the slide, it was missing, like, the little vinyl that will go on the doors that were part of the submittal.
Yes, those are fine. They're not, they're not significant.
Okay, they don't have to go, okay, okay.
Yeah, they're a part of your package.
Okay. Other than that, that was all.
Alright, well, thank you. We're gonna move to Commissioner Comments. Do we have any comments, Commissioner Alba? Commissioner Miller?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Derry?
Nope.
And no comments from myself as well. We open the floor to public comment. Do we have anyone here in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone online? Okay, I request a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-033.
Alright, Commissioner Derry moved to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Alright, on to our next item, application number 24-067AAR. 501-103, 103 Road Avenue Repaint. The applicant RightWay Contracting and Painting, on behalf of CICF2FL2MO1LLC, is requesting an architectural approval to repaint an existing building for a property located at 501-103rd Road Avenue N. Do we have an applicant for this, present? Please take the podium.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair. That seemed like a pretty simple description there, but when you read it out loud, it was not so simple, so sorry about that.
Don't twist your neck. Alright, sir, can you state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm David Westmoreland, and I'm with RightWay Contracting and Painting.
Turn it over to Legal.
So you saw the previous application. This is also quasi-judicial. Can you raise your right hand for me, please? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Turn it over to Josu for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 24-067. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to repaint an existing building, properties located at 501-103rd Avenue North. The applicant proposes to use SW7064 Passive for the body of the building. SW7063 Nebulous White for the accents, the bends, the base, the caps, door, as well as trends, and SW7068 Grizzle Gray for the awnings. This slide illustrates the location of the subject building. I don't know if you could see it, highlighted in red. This slide illustrate the existing and proposed painting of the building. Smaller picture to the right of the screen is the existing color, and the bigger picture on your screen is the proposed color. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-067AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Josu. Is that Mr. Westmoreland?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a presentation for us?
I don't really have anything to present.
Okay, any comments? No? Alright, so we're gonna move over to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Alba?
None.
Commissioner Miller?
Just looks like a new, good color to put in, so thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Leland?
We'd love to see improvement.
Good job.
Derry? They said it all for me. Alright, so we're gonna move to public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience willing to speak on this item? No? Do we have anyone online? Alright, close the floor to public comment. Do I have a motion on this item?
I move that we approve application number 24-067 as submitted.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Miller. Seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Very much. You're a cheap date tonight. So far.
It seems like you're on for the next item as well, so we're gonna move to the next item, application number 24-068AAR. 601-103rd Road Avenue Repaint. The applicant RightWay Contracting and Painting, on behalf of CICF2FL2MO1LLC, is requesting architectural approval to repaint an existing building for and a property located at 601-103rd Avenue North.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the applicant is sworn, so he remains sworn. I'll just ask the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Pass it over to Josu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 24-068AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to repaint an existing building, properties located at 601-103rd Avenue North. The applicant proposes to use similar color scheme as mentioned in the previous application, SW7064 Passive for the body of the building, SW7063 Nebulous White for the accent, the bend, base, caps, door trends, and SW7068 Grizzle Gray for the awning. This slide illustrates the affected building, highlighted in red. This slide illustrate the existing and proposed color scheme for the building. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-068AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Josu. Mr. Westmoreland, do you have a presentation on this?
No presentation.
Alright, gonna move over to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Alba?
None.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Leland? Commissioner Derry? No. No comments on myself as well. Do we have any public comment on this matter? Any online? Alright, I guess we can move. Requesting a motion for this item.
I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-068.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Derry. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second to that motion by Commissioner Alba. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Alright, on to the next item, item four, application number 24084AAR. Three natives at crossroads. The applicant, Three Natives, Acai and Juicery, on behalf of Crossroads R2G Owner LLC, is requesting an architectural approval to install wall signage for a property located at 1192 Roop Palm Beach Boulevard. I see we have the applicant present. State your name for the record, sir.
Gil Strellick Jr. with Sinorama.
Pass it over to Legal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, as you've heard, this is also a quasi-judicial item. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Pass it over to Village Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number 24-084AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install wall signage, properties located at 1192 Roop Palm Beach Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed signage. To the left is the existing wall without the sign. To the right of your screen is the signage, Three Natives, as shown. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-084AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Josu. Do I have, sorry, Mrs. Strellick Jr., do you have a presentation on this?
I don't have a display, but if anybody's been in Palm Beach County and have stopped at Three Natives, I know it's a great juicery and growing franchise, and all their signs are similar to the color and what you see, and we hope you approve it.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Commissioner Comments, let's go the other way. Commissioner Derry?
No, just my husband will be real excited about this coming.
Commissioner Leland?
None.
None? Commissioner Miller?
My daughter's very excited.
Commissioner Alba?
None.
I have to say, the Chronic Bowl is my favorite, so...
I was gonna say, if you've been, you know. They empty my wallet once or twice a week.
Alright, do we have any public comment on this matter? Anyone online? Alright, okay. I close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
That we approve. Application number 24-084 as submitted.
Alright, approval by Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
Motion carries five to zero.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You as well. Thank you. Alright, so next item, application number 24049PVAR. 100 Aldi Way Parking. The applicant, RP Logistics LLC, is requesting parking variance from Section 23-512J to allow for 159 spaces where Village Code requires 256 spaces, a variance of 97 spaces for a property located at 100 Aldi Way. See, we have the applicant present. State your name for the record, sir.
Good evening, Mark Smiley, Smiling Associates, representing the developer.
Turn it over to Legal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you've seen the previous applications, this is also quasi-judicial, so I'll swear you in for this one and the next item. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the commission and ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
None.
Thank you.
Alright, turn it over to Josu.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to mention this application is being reviewed concurrently with the special exception application, which is obviously whatever decision you guys decide to recommend does impact the special exception as well. It cannot exist without this variance, okay? Application number 24-049. The applicant is requesting a parking variance from the Village Code of ordinances, Section 23-512J, to allow for 159 parking spaces where Village Code requires 256 parking spaces, a variance of 97 parking spaces. Code Section 23-512J requires a minimum of one space per 500 square feet of gross floor area, plus one space per employee on a maximum work shift be provided for industrial and manufacturing uses. Village Code Section 26-32F6 allows the Village Council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, or do not result from the actions of the applicant, or will not confer on the applicant any special privilege, or is a literal interpretation of the provisions of this division will deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties, or it will be in harmony with the general intent and purposes of this division, or will not be injurious to the area involved, or detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant contends that granting this variance will not be injurious to the surrounding area or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Village staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands, and granting the variance will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. Therefore, staff is recommending, is requesting a recommendation of denial be submitted to Village Council regarding application number 24-049PVAR and variance order VC24-06. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Josu. Mrs. Smiley, do you have a presentation?
Yeah, just to discuss, this is very similar to the other tenant that's on the west side of this building, where we went through the same process where the staff recommends denial, but this particular tenant has small airline equipment that is shipped to them. They fix it in-house, and then they ship it back out, so there's not a lot of people that come in and have to park at this facility, so this kind of fits the slot of, you know, they have 10 to 15, max 20 employees, so it fits the parking that's required for this particular tenant, and I think it's a, it meets the intent of what the facility is really constructed for.
Alright, thank you, sir. Do we have any Commissioner comments on this? No? Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. So Mr. Smiley mentioned another building. Did we grant a variance for the other building, or?
It's the same building, so there's another tenant. It's a huge warehouse that was site planned for office warehouse combinations. However, any manufacturing uses that come does have different requirements for parking, and the parking requirements for manufacturing uses is a little bit, it's more intense than what's required for, for the office warehouse, regardless of how much demand does the use bring to the development. So there is a, there is a previous approval that, that we've granted before, but that doesn't mean that we have to continue on, but yes, per the code, we can't just recommend approval because this is a request to deviate from the code, so staff has to recommend denial.
I had one thing to this also is, you know, this is for this particular tenant, so even if you guys grant the approval, it's not like another tenant can just come in without having to go through this process. So this is specific to just this tenant. If the tenant change, changes, we have to come back and do the same thing and ask for that request. So I want to clarify that this is not like an ongoing forever type change to the, to the site. It's specific to the tenant.
Legal, is this accurate?
So that, that's accurate as it pertains to the use, which is the next item. The variance actually runs in perpetuity, so should ultimately the council approve the variance, it would run with the land. The use approval for the next item on your agenda would cease to exist if the use ceases to exist, so that is accurate to a degree. The other thing I would say is, to Commissioner Miller's point, just because a variance was granted for this building or for any other building in the village, whether it's identical, whether it's the same tenant, whether it's very, very similar factually, that doesn't mean that the commission or the council ultimately has to approve a variance. Each application is evaluated based on the responses that the applicant has provided in the packet that you have before you. He addressed all of the variance criteria that Josu just went through, so there's no precedent setting in terms of, should you approve this one, that that somehow means you have to approve everything in the future as it relates to the variance. With that, I can answer any questions, if there's any further questions.
Commissioner Leland, do you have a comment?
I do. What is the purpose of asking for the lesser parking spaces? Are they gonna use it for something? Are they gonna use it for storage? I mean, why, I mean, the spaces are already there.
Correct, but if you're looking at the request that the applicant is, is requesting, it requires more parking spaces be allocated to that use. Just as you mentioned, the property is already built out, parking space is already there, so this is for them to sort of legally allow the use to come in and meet the parking requirements. Currently, the spaces are out there. If we were to look evaluate the use itself, the parking is not enough pursuant to the requirements of the required parking for that specific use.
Can I add some clarity to that maybe?
Please.
So sometimes in these manufacturing facilities, there's, you know, hundreds of employees that come in, so you need all the parking spaces for that. Then you have people that might come to the facility to pick up their materials and things like that. This isn't a situation like that. This is a tenant that literally has things just shipped to the store, or to the, excuse me, to the facility. It's just a limited number of people that work in this tenant space. They fix it, and then they, they ship it back out, so it's, it's not a high volume of employees to work in this specific space.
But the point is, is do you have a use plan for the space then?
Yes, that's what this special exception use is requesting, is for this type of...
So just one clarification, sir. This is the parking variance application that they're on now. The use is the next item, but it is, there is a use that's intended. The use, the parking variance is based on the use that is in the next application. It's the manufacturing use.
They kind of correlate together, so I'm sorry I'm talking about it altogether, but they do function kind of together.
They do, and one comment if I could make for the commission, too. This is, as Josu indicated, the current code, and correct me if I misstate an... This is, as Josue indicated, the current code, and, and correct me if I misstate in any way, but the current code requires parking based on the total square footage, and then additional parking for employees. And that's a maximum, what is it, peak?
Yeah, work shift.
Maximum employees, that peak work shift, I think is what the code says. Staff has been looking at this code section and this requirement. It's all, I'll, I'll use the term double parked. That's a very generic way to say that, but it's almost like you're parking for the square footage of the building, and then you're also parking for the employees. So staff, I think at the last time this item, uh, was before the commission, I think that was a comment that Bradford made, that the code requires a significant amount of parking for this use, and there's a question, at least, I think at the staff level, as to whether that's ultimately necessary, or whether that may be a little bit overparked, if that's helpful. But that is the code we're working with now, so that's why they're here for the, for the variance request.
Yeah, I would just have a concern that the, well, we'll get into that on the next item, I guess, but, um, that kinda opens the door to have storage boxes or something out there to put parts in, and, you know, I don't even wanna open that door.
I, I don't even know if that's allowed i- it to, to have stor- outdoor storage in this facility.
It would not be. Any, any parking spaces would be parking only.
This is strictly an inside, very small equipment. It's not like large aeronautical, you know, you're not, you're not having engines and wings show up. It's all small package items that's all inside. Nothing will be stored outside.
All right, Commissioner Deary?
Um, would denial of this application, um, mean that your tenant would no longer be able to have this particular tenant come in? I mean, your, the, your client?
That's correct.
Um, and would there be a significant burden to your, to the owner, um, should you have to make up the additional parking?
Yes, there's, it's, it's really difficult on this, this site to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no comments. Um, do we have any members of the public? Online? No? All right, so I guess we can, um, move for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application number two four dash zero four nine, PBR, PVAR.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from, uh, Commissioner Deary. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Uh, motion fails, uh, th- our motion is rejected, uh, three to two.
So before you move on, uh, Commissioner, and, and Mr. Chair, uh, that motion failed. That wo- motion was to approve, uh, and that, that was, did not pass, so now would be the time for any additional motions. Uh, if the commission would, would make an alternative motion, now would be the time.
Oh. Um, is there an alternative motion on the floor? For item, uh, two four dash zero four eight?
I move that we, uh, do not approve application number twenty-four dash zero four nine, I believe is the one we're on, as submitted.
Uh, we have, uh, um, a motion to, to deny application two four, uh, zero four eight by Commissioner, um, Miller. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Commissioner Leland. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, we...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, before you move on, I didn't, not sure I heard your vote, Commissioner Alba.
I agree. Nay. I, so it's, it's a three to, uh, three to two.
All right, so, uh, motion to, um, reject, I, application two four zero four eight, that carries a two to three, uh, sorry, three to two. All right, moving on to, uh, next app, uh, application, number, uh, two four zero four eight, SE, one hundred Aldi Way. The applicant, RP Logistics LLC, is requesting special exemption approval to allow for a tw- um, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-three square feet of manufacturing limited processing and assembly, um, i.e. cabinetry, et cetera, within the existing warehouse building in the industrial limited zoning district for a property located at one hundred Aldi Way. See, the application is present. Um, uh, can we move to, uh, the, a staff presentation?
Before we do that, uh, the comm- the applicant has been sworn, uh, as was done on the previous item, but I do need to ask for commissioner ex parte disclosures on this application. Thank you.
All right, turn over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application number twenty-four zero four eight, SE. Applicant seeking special exception. Use approval to allow manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly in order to operate a twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-three square foot, um, certified federal aviation administration repair station focusing on commercial airplane components, primarily engine parts, on a property currently constructed, and site planned for a one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred square foot office warehouse combination. The property is located within the, um, Aldi Park Plant Industrial District, um, with, um, postal address at one hundred Aldi Way. This slide illustrate the, um, proposed bay to be occupied by New World's, um, Novo Arrows, so highlighted in red. This is where, um, the new tenant will be. And reviewing the, um, proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with, um, adjacent land uses consistent with the village comprehensive plan and conformance with the village development standards for the industrial limited zoning district, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with, um, the policies and standards of the village comprehensive plan, or complies with all applicable development regulations of the village code, or does not have adverse environmental impact. The proposed special exception does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, or does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, or does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties, or is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood. Does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, or is not a deterrent to the improvement of development of adjacent properties. All the proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the quality of, or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of, um, conditions of approvals. The following are some site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed use. The special exception use approval shall become null and void should the operator Novo Airroll Services LLC cease operations at this location. The project is subject to and shall remain consistent with the provisions of the, um, Palm Beach County Traffic Concurrent Standards. The site shall remain in compliance with the north's limits set forth in section twenty-six dash one oh one Performance Standards of the Village Code of Ordinances at all times, and if any, at any point in the future should not comply with the north's limits. The applicant agrees to take whatever action is necessary to comply with the north's limits in section twenty-six dash one oh one. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council for application number twenty-four dash zero four eight, SE, and resolution number twenty-four dash seventeen, subject to all conditions of approval outlined in the resolution. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josue. Um, Mr. Smiley, do you have, um, any, uh, another presentation on this?
Yeah, I, I've already described the company, but they're bringing, uh, excellent, you know, high-paying jobs to the village, so I think it's an asset to the community, to the village, and, uh, we'd appreciate, uh, approval.
Commissioner Comment? Commissioner Alba?
None.
Commissioner Miller?
None, sir.
Commissioner Leland? Commissioner Deary?
So I'm kinda at a catch twenty-two, so I have some questions for you here, um, because with this approval would mean, and our denial of the last one, it would mean anyone occupying the space would need to have, for the manufacturing, um, those additional ninety-seven spaces, correct?
That's correct.
Which could potentially take up green space in the area, take out some of the area surrounding, because there's not that much area to add those ninety-seven spaces.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all my questions.
All right, do, do we have any public comments? Anyone online? No?
And, and just for the commission, the, Josue had some, uh, conditions of approval that were on the screen, but, uh, given your action on the last item, um, obviously, both of these applications proceed to the village council, so, um, your motion tonight should also, and I think Josue said this at the beginning of the first presentation, uh, the use approval would be subject to either a site plan modification coming up with a deficient parking spaces, or ultimately approval of the variance at the council level. So, it's built into the documents that we have, but I just wanna make sure that, that there is a way, um, with condition language added to your motion, that you could approve this despite your action on the last item. It would just be an additional condition, uh, that, you know, either a variance is ultimately granted by the council, or, uh, a modification to the plan is, is developed to come up with the parking spaces.
All right, I close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application number twenty-four dash zero four eight with the, I forgot what Minnie said.
Either approval of the variance, uh, council approval of the, uh, variance application, the parking variance application, or, uh, some other modification to the site plan to accommodate the parking.
She said approve.
Uh, motion to approve by Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with conditions, uh, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next meeting will be Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at seven PM. Um, do I have a, um, a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second? All right, in favor? Aye. All right, motion, or, uh, meeting's adjourned.
Great job, tomorrow.